I call this meeting of Millersville Borough Council to order as of 6 o'clock PM. As a reminder to all in attendance, this meeting is being livestreamed. I ask that you all now please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, all may be seated. As with most meetings, I will start with a motion to approve council minutes for our meeting held on August 26, 2025. Do I have a second?
Second.
Very good. Any discussion required on those minutes? You look fine to me. Very good. All those in favor of approval, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. At this time, council will hear any comments, requests, or concerns from members of the public related to items on the agenda or other matters. You will have up to five minutes to speak. We ask that you either come to the microphone or request that the microphone be brought to you, also that you give your name and a general address for the record. Would anybody like to address council at this time?
My name is Richard France. I live at 55 North Dug Street for the last 50 some years. I'm concerned about the areas, but the West Nile Disease, have we sprayed or tell anyone spraying around Millersville? I know there's a lot of construction, a lot of holes, a lot of water standing, plus areas in Millersville. I've been bit more times than I would like this year. I don't know, it's because of construction or whatever's going on, but I think since E-Town, Lancaster, and all the surrounding areas are getting sprayed, I didn't know if you considered, or maybe you already did it, I don't know, but I think that the council should consider.
Thank you. As always appreciated. Richard, what on that?
So, all municipalities in Lancaster County are part of the mosquito control board. They do a lot of testing in all the municipalities. And about once every few weeks, I get an email from them letting us know what the results of the tests in Millersville are. Thus far, no West Nile virus has been found in Millersville. If there was to be some found in Millersville, then the mosquito control board takes care of the actual spraying. And they don't necessarily, they don't necessarily communicate with us about that aspect of it, but they let us know that if it was to be found, then they would be doing spraying, but so far, we have not had any in the borough.
So, in essence, it's reactive, not preventative.
That's correct.
Very good. Thank you, Rebecca. Thank you, Richard. Would anybody else like to address council at this time? Very good. In that case, we will move on. I believe we have a presentation by the Lancaster County Library, some new faces.
Yeah, thank you so much. As you can see, I am not John Hindley from Lancaster Public Library. I am Elise Pollak, the donor relations associate at Lancaster Public Library, very newly. And today, I have Theodore Griffiths, who is our manager of business services and circulation. Before I start my presentation, does anybody need a paper copy of the presentation that we're going to go through? I brought a few just in case. No? Oh, great.
I'll take one if you have.
Like what?
Don't want it in your school. Get mine out.
It is in your digital backup folder.
Then I have it at home. Thank you.
Did you want one as well?
Yeah, I should have one, thanks.
Well, we just wanted to start today by saying thank you so much for having us here to talk with you a little bit about Lancaster Public Library, our impact in Millersville Borough, and the support that you all provide to Lancaster Public Library every year. So, thank you so much for having us. I want to start with telling you a little bit about the library. Our mission is the Lancaster Public Library inspires, empowers, and strengthens our community by connecting people with information, ideas, and enriching experiences. And the vision that we hold for our work is by providing equitable access to vital educational resources, exceptional program, and community building opportunities. The Lancaster Public Library is recognized as a dynamic center of knowledge and a cornerstone of a thriving Lancaster community. So, as we think about how this impacts Millersville Borough, in 2024, we found that 17% of residents are Lancaster Public Library stakeholders, which is pretty fantastic. 9,480 materials were borrowed by residents in 2024, and then this amounts to about $274,000, or $274,920 in borrowed library materials. As we take a look at community engagement in 2024, patron library visits from Millersville Borough residents were 236,373. And, oh, I'm so sorry, this is community-wide, so this is all 14 of the municipalities that Lancaster Public Library serves. 527,580 materials were circulated within the community, and 80,920 patron computer and wireless sessions happened at the library. So, this includes library or public computer usage as well as library Wi-Fi logons at the library. So, right, when you think about the library, you think about books, but what about beyond the books? So, at Lancaster Public Library, we have the Business and Reference Center, which is a great resource for local business owners, local nonprofits, local entrepreneurs to access resources to improve their businesses, maybe start their business. We also have the Autism Resource Center, which is a great resource for folks who may be on the autism spectrum or have some sensory things that they're dealing with in their life. We host the Lancaster Collection. We also offer hotspot devices. We have in our new space, a number of workrooms and meeting space rentals, including one free space that is available for free for nonprofits. We know that funding can be a little bit challenging, or budgets can be tight for some nonprofits, so we wanted to be able to offer that as a space for them to use at no cost. We also offer a number of e-resources, including Libby and Hoopla for audiobooks and eBooks. And then we also have Lot4Kids, which is a digital platform where people can download and children can download books in all different kinds of languages to better serve the languages that are present in the Lancaster community. It can be very expensive to buy books, as one might, you know, understand or know or think, and to be able to offer them in the languages that everybody needs them would be exceptionally expensive. So, this is a really cool resource that we have that people can digitally download books in the language that will best suit their lives. We also offer a number of children, youth, and adult programming, as well as some fun and practical items such as American Girl Dolls, museum passes, baking pans, and musical As we take a look at that programming that I mentioned, last year in 2024, across all of Lancaster Public Library, there was an 18% increase in program attendance, which is a pretty exceptional increase that we were really excited to see. Some new programs in 2024 were the Read It and Eat Cookbook Club, the ASL, or American Sign Language Storytime, which is completely done in ASL, and the Future Architects Club. Popular programs that we've had for a number of years are Baby Storytime, Teen Gaming, Thursday Book Group, Music and Movement, and the Builders Lab. And we just recently had Summer Reading come to a close, as we know, schools have started, and numbers have come in from that, and we were really excited about the numbers this year. Just over 4,000 patrons were served. 203 programs were offered in 10 weeks, which is a pretty incredible number of programming. And then about 1,100 challenges were completed by community members who are involved in this program, which is pretty exceptional. And then as we take a look at our 2026 projected budget, the breakdown here is we are funded 64% library sources and 36% government sources, which is what the Millersville Borough supports as well, in that kind of 9.1% of municipal funding. We are seeing this year, or coming in 2026, we received ARPA funding through the city of Lancaster to increase some outreach initiatives and some other initiatives as well, including an early literacy librarian. That is 7.3% of our funding right now. So, as that funding comes to a close in 2026, we're really trying to navigate and figure out what sustainable funding looks like to kind of cover that gap, as we have these programs that we started and want to maintain as a benefit to the community. And then if you look on the left side there, the library sources, about 50% is fundraising, so the Friends of the Lancaster Public Library are just over 9% of that, and then our community fundraising is about 40%, a little over 40% of that. As we take a look at funding per capita here, the Pennsylvania recommended dollar amount for per capita funding for public libraries is $5. Lancaster Public Library, we took a look at the numbers, we are averaging about $1 per capita of funding for the community. As we take a look at our place in the state, there are 450 public libraries in Pennsylvania. Lancaster Public Library is the eighth largest service area, which is, you know, pretty large considering where we are in the state. And then 18th, we rank in the largest catalog of materials. So, not only are we, you know, we're a pretty large library, but we're also, you know, managing and stewarding one of the larger size catalogs. So, we're pretty proud to be able to do that work with the support that we have from the community. So, again, we just really wanted to say thank you so much for partnering with us and supporting the work that we do at Lancaster Public Library. In, actually, so this number is for your 2025 contribution, was $5,000, which we are really grateful for. And we wanted to take a little bit of a closer look at community engagement with the library. So, we took a look at community members. So, 57 individual community members have donated to Lancaster Public Library over the last five years, which is a really great number. And then we also have two organizations in Millersville Borough who have donated to Lancaster Public Library within the last five years. So, as we think about, as we think about the work we do and we think about funding, it's, we're always kind of wanting to grow and wanting to evolve. It's something that we've done with the Lancaster communities since our inception in the late 1700s. So, what is next for Lancaster Public Library? This year in 2025, as part of that ARPA funding that I had talked a little bit about, we launched a very long dream of by leadership outreach program, which basically increases the amount of outreach that we're able to do in the community. We were able to purchase a mobile, we were able to purchase a van to create a mobile library that we basically take into the community. So, we, you know, put everything that we need into the van, take it out into the community as on the go, is what it's called. We were able to hire an outreach specialist who is full-time and dedicates his time to bringing the word of the library out into the community, but also bringing the library itself out into the community so that we can increase access to the wealth of resources that the library has. We did a little bit of digging into this in just six months. So, this started in January this year. By the end of June, our outreach specialist partnered with 42 community organizations and reached more than 5,300 people, and that is in just six months. So, we're really excited about what this can continue to do throughout the rest of the year and as we're able to sustain it and continue it, you know, in the future. And then dreaming, right? What else would we like to do? So, should funding increase, should we be able to garner some more support for the library? Our dreaming looks like expanding community partnerships so that we can broaden our reach in the community, more programs in other languages, so ASL, Spanish, and other languages, so that we can represent better the community that we serve and who are interacting with the library, extended evening hours to create a little bit more access for folks who may not be able to get to the library during traditional work hours, hire a staff social worker to support patrons, and as well as increase staff presence on the floor to support the community. And that's, that is all I have. Again, I just wanted to say thank you so much for having us. My name is Elise Pollak. I'm going to invite Theodore up here. If anybody has any questions, feel free.
And one question, do you get any support from the parking garages? Because a more difficult part for the suburban people is to come in and find, I don't mind walking a few, I park up near, it's free, that block, it's free, but for people that want to come in there, no support from the garages?
You know, that is a really great question. I am, I am not 100% sure. Theodore, do you know if there is?
I don't think there is.
I know in the past, there was outreach to them about some spots that maybe we could have for our patrons. I don't know where that went, but it is something that we would like to go after in the future once things improve. Yeah.
Yeah. Anything else?
Other questions from council?
Well, it's a beautiful place downtown, so.
We really love it. We really do love it.
It's fantastic. Yeah, I can't wait to see it back to what it was a few months ago. But we'll get there. Yeah. Thanks to all for having us. I met this family in this community because I went to Millersville. I never left, so I just want to say that it's a fantastic area. Thank you so much for having us.
This is 50.
Thank you. We appreciate it.
Yes, of course.
Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
All right. From there, we'll move on to business of our committees, starting with Finance Advisory Committee. Start with a roll call. It includes myself, other members of Finance. Please raise your hand. We aren't missing one member, but we do have a quorum. Thank you. First and foremost, review and approval of August financial reports. I will start with a motion to accept the August financial report and authorize staff to satisfy the ordinary and routine obligations incurred by the borough for this month. Do I have a second?
Second.
Members of committee have anything they need to discuss before a vote? Very well. All those in favor of moving this out of committee, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions? And we will move on. Next item on the agenda is a discussion of our 2026 budget goals and preliminary projections. I assume I'm inviting you, Rebecca, to speak on that.
That's me. All right. It is that time of year again, we're going to start having the budget conversations tonight, just as we did last year. This is just a preliminary overview of what we're looking at for the budget this year, specifically some of the changes that we're looking at, as well some things that we're looking at, big picture, that really tie into our capital improvement plan. So, no, no hard numbers tonight. That'll be at the October meeting. Tonight's just the overview of sort of what we're looking at, and then a chance for council to discuss any additional goals that we should be making sure is included into the budget for this year. And new this year, in this presentation, we have some new pictures, and I'm really excited about them. This is a National Night Out. So, as a just a quick reminder of some budget requirements, this all comes down from borough code.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm in that picture. It's not a super flattering angle.
So, for our budget requirements, this all comes, of course, from borough code specifically. That is one of the things that is, I guess, nice about the budget process is, is the things that we have to do are written in borough code very specifically. So, we will be working to prepare and release a proposed budget, and then when we get closer to the point of voting on it, we'd be publishing notice of the proposed budget, doing any additional revisions at that time, then adoption of the final budget. And that would also include a resolution or an ordinance for the levy, levying of taxes. Last year was an ordinance. This year could be either, depends on how council wants to move forward with taxes for this year. So, that's just the reminder about what our requirements are. Oh, that came up funky on the screen, but you all also have this in hard copy as well because this is not new. This is our fall budget schedule. We are at the point now where we're having the discussion about budget goals this evening with the Finance Committee. On October 3rd is when I'll be submitting the proposed budget to Borough Council, and that is in advance then of the special budget meeting on the 9th of October. And then additional committees will be having a look at their sections of the budget, moving then to November with final budget approval with the Finance Committee, and then to council for approval to advertise, and then adoption on November 9th, or December 9th, I'm sorry. Now, of course, the borough code says that we can, of course, adopt a budget up until December 31st, however, typically, that second meeting of council is canceled because nobody really wants to be here.
For shooting.
Yes, exactly, during the holidays. So, we aim to have our budget approved, well, in advance of those dates. Unless, of course, anyone's very interested in being here on New Year's Eve, but I don't think anyone is. So, that is our schedule. Any questions about that? Pretty much the same as last year. So, some overview information, as a reminder, you know, our budget is both a financial management tool as well as a policy document. We, in the borough, tend to do a combination of both line item budgeting, zero-based budgeting, and incremental budgeting. And of course, our aim is to have a balanced budget at the end of the year. In terms of our revenue, generally, of course, as is the case most every year, our real estate taxes tends to be our chief revenue source. Our chief expense source is, of course, typically labor and the associated costs with that. That has not shifted or changed from last year to this year. A couple of things that I wanted to specifically point out that you should be anticipating when you look at the budget this year is a couple of changes. I would say to take particular look at our solid waste, which is our trash operating fund. So far this year, it is looking like expenses are going to be exceeding revenue when it comes to our solid waste. That's mostly because of the fact that our contract with Penn Waste, our new contract with Penn Waste started last year, but of course, there is a clause in it that it goes up slightly every year. We have a five-year contract. So, that is going up, but the, if council chooses not to raise it, the price that residents pay would potentially be staying the same, which gets us into a scenario where we will be a little bit short there in our solid waste funds. That'll be something that council really want to take a look at when we get down to looking at the operating account, or operating fund for our solid waste, because we, of course, know the trash collection is very important. We expect a slow increase, I would say very, very slow, a slow increase in revenue from the new homes that are being constructed and finished in both Cross Gates and Winfield. I say slow because it's literally one house at a time, and there can be a month where we get one house, maybe there's another month we get two or three, but it is relatively slow. But when I say revenue, we're talking about the revenue from the permit side of it, as well as the revenue from the tax generation of that. So, very slow, not something that we really should bank on as a big revenue source for us in the coming year, but one for us to acknowledge will be a slow increase as we go into next year. Something that's new in the budget, not necessarily a huge increase, but it is new in the budget is that because we got rid of the Educational Service Agency, since we took the crossing guard contract, or we took crossing guards out to contract, now we have a new line in our general fund that accounts for the crossing guard contract, as well as in the revenue part of the general fund, the percent that Penn Manor pays into that. So, that'll be something new to look at, at the budget. Borough labor costs increase, of course, as they do every year because of our two labor unions. The ASME union is contracted for 4% increase this year, and the police one is yet to be finalized, so that'll be part of our discussion later. But either way, it will be an increase. We don't know yet, health insurance, just like every year, we don't find it out until the third week of September, when we get our health insurance numbers. That will be included into the budget. Right now, maybe I'm being pessimistic, but I'm thinking we're probably going to be around 10, just like we were last year, a 10% increase. So, I put that into our budget projections at this point. It might be different, but we'll see. We were 10% last year. You will notice increased spending on both the operating and the capital improvement side for stormwater maintenance, specifically replacement of pipes that are either damaged or absolutely have exceeded the age of usefulness. As we've talked about in a couple of different times this year around specific issues, stormwater continues to be a big one for us in terms of unexpected issues. We've got a number of sinkholes in the borough right now caused by our just aging stormwater infrastructure. We continue to have to spend a decent amount of money on getting new inlets and cleaning out those inlets and doing general maintenance on our stormwater. So, that's a big one for us, and one that's generally challenging for boroughs because we don't necessarily have the easy ability to just charge a stormwater fee like our township friends do. So, it's one that will be on our radar. We're trying to think both big picture and next year, sort of the short term and the long term on this, because this issue is not going away, and unfortunately, we're anticipating a number of additional sort of system breakages next year that we'll have to keep working And it's an issue that we're talking, that all the municipalities in the county are talking about and trying to come to some solutions together. So, I'll keep you updated on that, but you will notice that in the budget that we're just trying to prepare for the increased maintenance and replacement that we'll need to be doing on our stormwater system. And then finally, due to the changes that we made this year in terms of how we are investing some of our capital, capital fund money, you will notice an increase in the revenue that we're bringing in from interest on our capital reserve counts, which does lead, of course, to a little bit less revenue in our operating funds, but that, of course, was the intention that we want to be able to, to see more of our capital money, make more money, yes, in its accounts. So, you'll notice that on the budget as well. And these are just a few highlights. There's a lot more that we'll go over, but I just wanted to give you some things to be on the lookout for when you get the actual budget document. Things that aren't mentioned here generally are either going to be staying the same or have different things that we'll talk about. We will certainly want to have a conversation again around millage rate this year. The current millage rate is 6.55, so something to certainly discuss this year, especially as we get more solid numbers on our general funds, revenues and expenditures. We don't necessarily see any other big changes. Something that was, of course, first discussed this evening was the community service contributions, the first one being the library. Council can determine if they want to do the same amount as last year. You saw maybe in your backup information that something else that we just received, and I wanted to make sure you had it as soon as we got it. It was the request from Lancaster EMS, so that was in there. So, definitely take a look at that, and, you know, we'll have a conversation about what that number looks like. Last year was 5,000. The request from them this year is 21,000. So, certainly an area of conversation. If council would like them to do the presentation again like they did last year, they can, but that's up to you all.
Well, I'd like to know why there's a four-time increase from 5,000 to 21,000. I mean, that's a big jump.
Well, to be honest.
No, no, no. They requested 20,000 last year. We gave 5,000.
All right.
And that was a pretty significant increase from what we had been giving as well.
That's right.
All right. We were only giving 2,000, I think.
So, there's that part of it.
I stand corrected.
It isn't, I haven't yet received, but it also isn't timed for, Blue Rock to send over their numbers for the year. I haven't received that yet, and it's still a little early for that anyway, but once I get those numbers as well, those will be into the Community Services section of the budget, which is, that sort of is one area where things can sort of depend on how council feels about it. I think those are the big things I want to talk about, so we can go to the next slide. Just a reminder of our fund breakdown, the only change this year is that you will see that the, in proprietary fund types, you don't see the Educational Service Agency Fund. That was the change this year. But otherwise, our funds all stay the same. And just a reminder too, that you won't necessarily see an actual budget breakdown for the funds in the fiduciary fund types, because those are not budgeted items, those are contractual-related, or for our park trust, it's a certain amount that we take out every year. So, there isn't necessarily a budget for those. Those are just funds that we have that are a part of our overall fund breakdown.
And then from which fund do we pay the new crossing guard contract?
At general fund now.
That's what I thought. Okay, thank you.
And this will probably look familiar. And this will probably look familiar, and I know it looks a little bit small on here, but there's a lot of good information in here, I think. And this is in your backup, so you'll be able to look at it more closely. But this was the plan that we talked about last year. And so, I'm bringing it back forward to show a couple of things that we've completed in this year or in progress. And then some changes that we made in terms of thinking about over the next two years. And this is very much reflected in our capital improvement plan. So, some of these are taken directly from there. And then most of these are connected back to the comprehensive plan as well. Because, of course, it's important for us to continue to work to make sure that we are achieving the goals that were set in the comprehensive plan. I won't necessarily read these all to you, but just a couple of ones to point out in terms of what we're looking at capital improvement-wise and big-picture-wise for year two and three. We're hoping to find out soon, eventually maybe, about our Park Master Plan funding that we applied for those two different grants for this year. So, hoping to hear back hopefully by the end of this year and into next year about the results of both of those. And then hopefully to be able to start actual work on putting in place the Park Master Plan. As I've already mentioned, storm sewer lines is a big one. Part of the comprehensive plan is a number of different conversations around the Main Street revitalization. I know that we had a brief conversation about that at the last meeting. But that's, you know, still something that's on the table for us. Radio replacements is going to be a big one going into the next few years. Our Police Department knows that very well. There have been a number of conversations at the county level. Still don't have a lot of information on exactly when we're going to be having to be forced to make this change. But radio replacements will be important so that we are part of the entire county system and can do all the communication that we need to do. And I'll mention, too, our traffic signal upgrades. That was something that we started this year with the first one being at Cottage and George. That being a very successful project. We hope to continue to do the signal upgrades, switching to that radar system for the switching of lights, continuing to do that as we pave throughout the Borough. Something that you'll see hopefully on next year's, into year three as well, is feasibility study for a new Quaker Hill pump station. That is our oldest pump station in the Borough. One that is definitely at the end of its life. A feasibility study for that in and of itself is a long process. And that would then lead to hopefully going out to bid and working through that process. And of course, some of that will depend on what happens with the 741-999 project. But that is definitely something that we are preparing for. And we'll be working closely with our engineers, T H D, on doing that feasibility study to see how and where a new pump station is going for the Quaker Hills neighborhood. And I'll just mention, too, that the East Frederick Street is also on our radar. We're hoping next year to find some opportunities to go after some grant funding for the restoration of this particular road. This is one that goes straight through campus but is a borough road and is desperate need of some serious restoration, not just a typical paving job. So, that's one that we're looking at for grant opportunities or different partnership opportunities. So, that's all I wanted to present tonight. I wanted to see if there was any questions as we jump into budget and also see if there's any other things that should be on our radar as we're preparing the budget for next year in terms of things that have a monetary value to them.
I have nothing specific, members of Council?
No.
Any questions? All right.
Dig into it.
Fair enough. Well, get excited. On October 3rd, you will have numbers in your inboxes.
That's everything from you?
Yes.
Very good.
Although I'm also the next one.
The next one. Oh, the unreserved fund balance policy, yes. Please continue.
Sorry. Just the way the agenda felt tonight. So, this was something that we talked about, a long time ago. The last time we talked about this was in, at the presentation of last year's budget, or this year's budget. The unreserved fund balance policy is an opportunity for us to put in place some additional structure to ensure that taxpayer funds are being set aside properly for emergencies and for large capital projects that will inevitably come about. We've been doing some work as we had the first capital improvement plan last year with last year's budget, and then putting some additional work into making sure that we're budgeting for those items. This is an additional item that is a policy that could be put forth to really help us in terms of the continued planning for the, you know, financial sustainability of the Borough. What I provided to you in the backup is a draft of a resolution and policy that I hope everybody has a chance to look at and think about. It's something that I think could have a lot of benefits for us, a lot of it we're already doing in one way or another. But having it in an actual policy, providing that structure, helps us to be able to prepare for those emergency scenarios. A scenario could be another pandemic finds its way, and we're looking at some, you know, a full first quarter of the year where tax revenue is not coming in because a pandemic has broken out. That's one scenario. Another scenario is a significant emergency infrastructure project that can't wait and has to be done, and we don't have the operating funds for it. So, we're preparing for things like that. I had some conversations with our auditors about this because it's something that they certainly recommend, as well as Gatsby recommends, the Government Accounting Standards Board. To have something like this, I've looked at a lot of different policies. We did some research around what different boroughs in our area, we're doing in this area. So, the one that we put together reflects some of the trends going on. And I will say, right now in there, you'll see an 18% number as the amount that we would aim to have in reserve for all three of our operating funds. But in some additional conversations today with our auditing firm, I think I'd actually like to up that and do it instead as an average of six months instead of putting a number on it. That gives us additional flexibility, as well as, I think the trend going right now is, I don't want to say preparing for the worst, but being a small Borough, preparing for things that could really have a big impact. And six months is maybe a more conservative way to look at it. So, I think we still have a couple of changes that we want to make on the staff side in terms of this document. But I wanted to get feedback from Council about what you thought about this on the policy side, and if there's anything else that you would see as important to include in this. And then if interested in moving forward, authorization to bring this to the solicitor for the legal review, once we finish the additional changes we want to make on the staff side.
Sure. How much do we know about the basis behind the 18%, three-month, six-month discussion? So, what is the, what's the policy basis or the philosophy behind those different amounts?
So, I initially was looking at 18% because I was trying to look at some averages and to look at what we currently have. We have more than 18% in almost every one of our operating funds. So, that would be more of a sort of a bare minimum. But I was looking at sort of the averages of what other boroughs around us typically have. And I saw the ones that were lower, I saw ones that were higher, I saw some that were 25%. And then there were a number of them that had a three-to-six-month average on it as well. In talking with our auditors today and thinking more about what we currently have, I liked the idea of saying three to six, or doing an average of three to six in reserve because I think that fits more with how our tax revenue comes in. Because for us typically are, because taxes are due in July, typically we're getting our tax revenue in the first half of the year. So, if an emergency were to happen, if a pandemic were to break out, something like that, that's the first six months of the year would be the most critical. So, if we're covering, if we're having reserves for that six months, then I think we're preparing ourselves well for then, if that were to happen, being sustainable for the rest of the year. So, that's my direction on it and looking at what other folks are doing.
Did you have questions?
No. I agree with her.
Yeah, I don't disagree right now. What is the current status of our planning around this kind of emergency financial planning?
So, right now, the way we have it in like our accounting system is really just around what the fund balance is. So, like last year in the budget document, there was a section that had on there just what our projected fund balance was going to be for each of our funds. So, that's right now really the only way that we are planning for the future is relying on fund balance. This would, this would add some structure around that and say, this is what should happen with the fund balance, and this is where it should live. And luckily, we actually already have the accounts set up to do it that way. We just don't have it in policy. So, it's a relatively easy change to make on the actual number side. And we're already set up for it anyway. It would just be a matter of having the policy in place.
I am not entirely unopposed to some additional structure, especially where it revolves around emergency planning. But that generally comes with a lack of agility. So, this policy being in place, essentially locking those funds, under what conditions would we have access to them?
So, in the policy itself, if you go to the second page, talks about the times when we could go over what we would say. If we were saying six months, the times that we could go over that amount to put away for planning.
You're talking about the second page of Exhibit A?
Yes.
Thank you.
One example could be if the collective bargaining agreements for either of our unions is set to expire, and we are expecting, you know, a large increase from that. If we're anticipating any large capital expense, which, of course, we make capital expenses every year, and we'd be saying that the next three years of the capital expense was going to be made, or simply by a majority vote of Council in its discretion that it seemed to be in the best interest of the Borough. So, this is putting structure around something but not taking away Council's ability to be able to act quickly in some emergency that we didn't plan for.
All right. So, generally what I'm hearing is that we will have a list of enumerated, I will call them emergencies, in which those funds will be accessible immediately. If there should be an unforeseen emergency, then Council will have to vote to release those funds.
Yep, that's essentially it. And then, of course, when it comes down to budget time each year, Council could look and say, okay, this is, this is an opportunity to use fund balance, or no, we're going to leave it as is this year. So, every budget cycle will be a chance to look at this again because essentially, this concept of an unreserved fund balance policy goes hand-in-hand with the budget.
And your recommendation is for us to have six months of operating funds available in that reserve balance?
Yep, and that would be for general fund, sewer operating, and solid waste operating.
As a percentage of our current fund balance, what would that, I'm not, I'll just say lock us out of with the understanding that we would vote to have access to that, to those funds?
So, I don't have that exact number in front of me at the moment.
That's fine. I can get it from you another time. But those are the, that's the direction I want to look in. How much of this money are we putting behind this firewall?
Sure. And if you, if you think about sort of how our typical spending looks in a year as opposed to revenue, I would venture to say we're probably looking at like 20% of just the fund balance itself, not our operating expenses, 20% of our fund balance being something that would be set aside here, which, at least in our general operating, we already have.
I consider that to be a reasonable percentage. Other questions? I'm sorry, I've been hogging the mic here for a while. For Rebecca about this. All right. Thank you very much, Rebecca, for that.
Do you want a motion to move ahead with this, or what?
If the committee feels appropriate, I don't necessarily need a motion just to say, yes, this is good to continue on with its process.
Yes, please and thank you.
Perfect.
Yeah, I don't, I don't believe we have a finalized...
Right.
...coordinates or the wording of that resolution in front of us yet. But once we do, that's something that, yeah, I'd be amenable to.
Perfect.
Very good. That does it for finance. Thank you all for your patience. That's what counts for an exciting Finance Committee meeting. As a little treat, we will not have Personal Advisory Committee. I just, we don't have any items to discuss. But I will be turning it over to Phyllis and Public Works.
Okay, Public Works. Roll call. I believe everyone is here. Please put your hands up. So, all four of us from the committee are here, Angela, Mike, Linda, and myself. The first item is a review of August codes report. I know that Rob isn't here.
Poor Rob is ill. This is things, so...
But all of this information was in your backup material. So, if you have any questions, I would recommend that you get them to Rob sometime very soon. But usually, the reports are excellent at all times. Okay, so let's move on to the next...
I'm in a Borough Council meeting, can I?
Let's move on to the next item. And the first item is discussion of Lancaster County vacant property reinvestment program and possible completion of property referral forms.
Yeah, yeah.
You would have gotten this backup material in your, your things. And hopefully, you've had a chance to look at it. I just have a couple of things that I want to mention before I draw your attention to some of those things. First of all, this is an excellent program that helps with vacant and blighted properties. And at this time in the Borough, I know that we have two particular places that we have been kind of looking at in relation to this. And one of those particular places, we looked at in June, I wrote all this down. I went back through my notes. June 11th, 2024, and out of committee, we authorized the Borough Manager at that time to move forward with this program. And we discussed it, first of all, at May 14th, then June 11th, and then at August 13th, 2024. And at this point, to the best of my knowledge, we have not moved forward with any of that, have we?
No, because to move forward, I'd need Council to make an actual motion about a specific property with an address.
Okay.
Yes.
Then we have to be considering these places. And the whole thing is a very, very long process. And my personal recommendation is that we actually start this process with properties that we are able to do that for. Now, I know that there's going to be some problems, maybe with one of those properties. So, at this point, we are not able to present the addresses and move forward. Maybe the one on Circle Drive we can. I don't have that number here, do you?
109 Circle.
109 Circle Drive. That's the one that we've been discussing for a long time. And so, I would like to make a motion that we start the process on 109 Circle Drive to be referred to the Lancaster County Vacant Property Reinvestment Program and possible completion of property referral forms. So, in your packet of information, you have also received what a referral form looks like. And you can see that there, it says Millersville Borough Executive Summary at the top of the page. And then that's about vacant and abandoned properties, and it explains everything here. So, I'm going to make a motion that we move forward with starting this process on 109 Circle Drive. Do I have a second from the committee?
I'll second.
Linda is seconding that. Everyone from the committee, please signify. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, so, that is coming out of committee. And we'll go to Council that we move forward with that particular one. The other one, I think we're going to have some questions there. And so, we're not going to bring that address forward this evening. But we will be looking to move ahead with that, okay? And like we said, this is a long process. So, it's not something that happens overnight. Do I have any questions from the committee about that? Okay, we passed that, and that will come out of committee. Moving on to discussion of property code compliance issues. This is a biggie. And the reason it is, is because we have had a number of people at Borough Council... And the reason it is, is because we have had a number of people at Borough Council in the last several weeks, um, bringing to our attention problems in the borough with weeds, et cetera. And we promised that we would get our codes person out and get him going all around the borough and checking everything out, which he has done. Rob does a very good job, considering the fact that he only works for us three days a week. And apparently, a lot of warnings have gone out, because we have received back, um, from a couple of people saying that it's not weeds, that what they have is actually, um, native pollinary, pollinator plants. So, our weed and property maintenance code was written a long time ago, and we are now seeing more properties in the borough that are now planting native pollinator plants. Many of these plants exceed the height that is stated in our ordinance. And they may appear to be weeds, when in fact, at first, you know, first glance, if, you know, if Rob's just driving by and he sees this stuff, he may think it's weeds, but in fact, it's not. It may be, uh, native plants. Now, we had three properties that have contacted us about their, um, native plants, and I personally went out and looked at all of them, and I know that there was one, I couldn't really tell for sure, but the other ones are definitely native pollinator plants. So, my recommendation at this point, I would like the Public Works Committee to consider the following, because we can address this and also save some time for Rob. If it's approved, then it would go to council, it would have to be passed by council. If a resident with a native pollinator garden gets a warning or a notice about weeds, they may then provide to the borough proof that it is a native pollinator garden. This should include a list of plants, photos, and so on, and we would have to determine exactly what they would need to show the borough to prove that it is native plants, not weeds. And, um, then they would not be cited. But what we would have to do sooner or later is to make an amendment to our ordinance concerning native pollinator plants. These kind of gardens are really neat, and they're very nice, but they also hide weeds. So, I think that whatever we were to determine here, or however we wanted to move forward, we would have to recommend that, um, they could have these pollinator plants, the native pollinator plants, but that they're going to have to keep it weeded. That's a hard determination, and I don't know how anybody's going to be able to go out and say, well, this is a weed and this isn't, but this is something we have to look at. I would like for Public Works then to recommend to council that we revisit our ordinance and possibly add a new section concerning native pollinating plants and requirements that need to prove that it is. If they, if Rob gives them a warning or citation, and they come back to the borough and say, these are native pollinator plants, they have to prove it with maybe a list of what the plants are and photos and so on. I might also mention that quite some time ago, when student lodging came to us about their solar field that they want to put over off of Cottage Avenue, we recommended to them at that time that they make the ground area there a native pollinator garden, and that was something that I saw in our, um, State Borough Association magazine. And so, this is being allowed in a lot of places in the state, and it's totally acceptable. So, comments from my committee?
Okay, I would like to forward this motion, but I do have one question. In instances here where there is a fine already subjected, that could be withdrawn based on our idea that we're going to write a new ordinance.
That is correct.
Okay.
That we just have to put something in place for now, until we can get a new section in the ordinance.
So, I make a motion that we, um.
Wait. No, oh, let's, let's hang on for just one second. Can I give just a little bit of information?
Go ahead, Rebecca.
So, the reason why we wanted to bring this forward to council this evening, and to the committee this evening, was because, as, as we have to do, our code enforcement officer goes out and has to follow our ordinance, and our ordinance does not provide any specific exceptions to our, our weed heights for native pollinator gardens. So, right, right now, it's, it's essentially like an accessory use, and it's a little more complicated than that. But, so, when, when our code enforcement officer goes out, he has to treat every property the same. So, if he's going out and citing weeds, for one, if he sees weeds, even if there's an unsure nature of it, in terms of if it's native or not, um, they have to be treated equally. So, that is why we, we gave out the notices and the citations. When we received this feedback back from residents, we wanted to collect it all, um, and then be able to present it in one swoop to council and say, this is an issue that's come up in terms of the enforceability of our ordinance. That's really what this comes down to, is enforceability of the ordinance. Right now, the way that our ordinance is written does not provide enough, um, structure and guidance around a native pollinator garden. So, what, so, in the short term, what staff specifically was looking for with this item was just general guidance from council on how you wanted us to handle these particular situations in the present. I, I only stop you because I don't necessarily think that there's a motion in that, or I think we're just more looking for guidance. What, what would eventually lead to a motion would be, um, if council wants us to, to want, want staff to put together a, a potential ordinance to change our ordinance to have specific allowances, and I, I would say probably a few additional definitions in our ordinance to specifically, um, speak to native pollinator gardens. So, I think there's a, there's a short-term direction that, that staff's looking for in order to, um, enforce our ordinance, and then there's the big picture, which is planning for a potential ordinance change in the future, which is something that we're happy to work on, um, with council's approval, but what, in the immediate, it's just the direction, and it sounds like we have a pretty good direction this evening.
Okay, I, I think I understand. So, first and foremost, there will be no fines yet on the, the, uh.
If that's the direction that council would like us to go in, then we can talk with each individual who received this about.
Until we revise this, because the pictures that are shown here are very clear, that whoever took the pictures and provided them, very clear, they're, they're pollinators, and they, they circled what they are, and, and the ones I'm looking at, they named the plants, so.
Absolutely. It's, it's just the fact that the ordinance doesn't provide language around it right now.
Right, so if they're not penalized financially by this so far, and we come to a conclusion, that.
Okay, Angela and Linda, would you, do you have any input on this, please?
Well, I think this is a growing trend, right?
That's right, it is.
Across the country, and because pollinator gardens bring so many benefits to, you know, the ecosystems and our community, and so I think we're in dire need of a change. I know that, um, the National Wildlife Federation and the PA Native Plant Society offers model ordinances for this, so that might be a good place to start, to look for, reinventing the wheel. But yeah, I think we need some change.
Thank you. Mayor?
My only suggestion would be if council is going to look into making an amendment to the ordinance, one thing that needs to be taken into consideration is the height of these plants, because those houses are now obstructed from the streets for refunding police officers, ambulances, and fire companies who can't see an address on those houses.
That's true.
So, there should be a height requirement for the front of the property visible from the street, so our first responders can see the properties.
There was one property that I visited today that sits kind of way up on a hill anyway, and the whole front down the hill where the pollinator plants, you could barely even see the house. So, you certainly would not have been able to see a number, but when I drove down the street, it was pretty obvious.
But I appreciate the hard work that these folks put into these, but again, I'm thinking of first responders trying to respond, should there be a problem there?
Same, exact same. Yes, and you made a comment, and I don't know how they'll do it with weeds, my concern is with the pollinator plants, or that they can, they'll get so tall that they block, you know, uh, first aid cars and so forth, but also that they come over onto the lanes where people are trying to walk. And that's one of the issues we've had with the weeds, is that you can't walk on a sidewalk or whatever, because you've got your weeds coming out, they call them weeds, but it's no different than a pollinator plant if it's over on, and blocks the sidewalk, so that's important also.
And I think all those things are very good comments and would need to be worked into whatever ordinance we eventually decide to have, and I like Angela's idea of checking with those particular places to get some sample ordinances that we can look at, and then in the meantime, uh, if people can prove that they are pollinator gardens, they would not have, get the citation. So, I think that's direction.
Yeah, I, I agree with that.
Yeah, I think so. I would say if, 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 if it's, please, as council, to make, to make a motion this evening would be, um, that you've given direction, um, to the borough to handle them in the immediate, but that your, your motion this evening is to authorize borough staff to work on creating a draft ordinance.
Yes, absolutely.
I don't need to make that motion now.
Yeah, go ahead.
Well, it's not my committee.
I'll do it.
And I'll second it. So, she's made.
I make the motion that we move forward with the, uh, native plant pollinator plans as we discussed this evening, however you want to say that, so that, uh, we have something in place to take care of people who have those gardens, until we can get an ordinance in place, and that we do want an ordinance to begin.
And there has to be some kind of modification with that, because you can't have six-foot or 10-foot tall trees in front, because it's a pollinator tree, that kind of thing.
I'm not sure about that. I mean, as long as you, as long as you have a clear margin on your household.
If it's, what I'm saying is, if it's blocking, if it blocks, it'll be an emergency.
I have a nice tree in front of my house, I'm not going to cut down, so, I, I'm not, we can, we can work with this when we make our new.
Yeah, we need to work that, work that out. Okay, does that make any sense now, Rebecca?
Yep, we got it.
Okay.
We'll get it, we just need a second.
A second?
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Everyone, please, uh, who is in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion is carried, and we will move forward with that, and that ends my portion of the evening.
Before you close out your committee, what are you specifically doing about the three letters received for, uh, the violation of property maintenance code?
Um, let me see, I have those here somewhere, I know which ones they are. It's, yeah. Um, I've already been to this one, I've been to this one, I've been to all of these properties. And from what I can tell, all of these are native plant pollinators that are planted on these properties. And so, therefore, I think we should not give them the citation, that they should fall under what we are starting to take care of at this point, because this is the trend. I will say that I do know the one property, um, on Crady Avenue, some of those are very, very high. I know because I walk through it on a regular basis, so we might want to talk to them about that.
There has to be some kind of modification.
The height.
Yeah, our, our code enforcement officer will, based on this, um, this evening, um, conversation, our code enforcement officer will, will rescind the notices.
Okay.
And would, would he let them know, Dan?
Mm-hmm, yep.
Okay.
I'll, I'll probably call them myself.
Okay, good.
Very good. Then we will move on to the mayor's report. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you very much. Just a couple of, uh, quick things. Thursday morning, I had the, uh, the pleasure of representing the borough, going to the Lancaster County Solid Waste Management Authority's, um, state of the authority. So, I'll be there on Thursday morning to represent the borough for that. Um, also, I will be attending a Lancaster County Mayor's Association meeting tomorrow, and I know one of the things on the agenda that, um, I've received a couple complaints about here in the borough, but a lot of boroughs are having the same issue, but not quite as bad as Lancaster City, it is with e-bikes and violation of laws, uh, internet traffic, um, so, probably brings back some information, Chief and I talked about it real briefly. Uh, some of the other boroughs I know are looking possibly at enacting ordinances to address, uh, the behaviors of some of the folks on these e-bikes. So, more to come on that after my meeting tomorrow. So, Chief, do you have anything?
Oh.
And I'll be at that meeting on Thursday also with you.
Fantastic.
One, one question, ma'am.
Yes.
Is the Millersville Parade, is that canceled now?
No. It's October 4th.
I've read, I've read two conflicting reports. I know you said last, we're glad to say we're going to have the parade, and.
Yeah.
So, I don't, uh, someone.
October 4th.
They just read this, and I thought, well, where did you read it? So, good.
Castle proved it.
I got claims that day.
Yeah, Castle proved it a few months, um, a few meetings ago.
Yeah.
No, no, I know that, but.
I'll just be going on a long lonely walk that day, I guess.
Just, uh, reported to me, but.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chief?
Yes.
Uh, Rebecca, I don't think you've talked enough this evening.
All right.
Move on to the manager's report.
Yes, absolutely. And I'll, I'll just say too, I'm, I'm glad to know that the Mayor's Association is talking about the e-bikes, because we're talking about that at the Borough's Association meeting as well, so I'm glad that, glad that it'll be covered on multiple ends, because we were, we were having the same conversations. Just a reminder about Saturday in the park, um, that is upcoming, uh, on the 20th of, right now, now I'm suddenly doubting myself, the 20th, yes, September 20th, um, in our park, this is a, uh, an event that is put on by the Millersville Business Association, um, uh, in our, in our wonderful Freedom Memorial Park. Um, it's from 11:30 to 1:00. It is a great opportunity for all residents to come out, very family-friendly event, there will be music, there will be food, there will be lots of free activities, especially targeted towards young kids, um, but we are super excited about hosting it again this year, um, so please, please come out that day, it'll be great. Um, the next item on the manager's report is review of an updated, um, Borough Right to Know Form. Uh, as changes have happened, um, at the state level with the Office of Open Records, um, they've made some updates to their right-to-know guidance, specifically concerning different things around AI submitted, uh, right-to-know requests, um, as well as anonymous requests. Um, that's been a particular issue over the last year. We actually, um, it was around middle of last year, we got hit with a few, um, anonymous requests, um, and at the time, there wasn't a lot of guidance around how to handle those. Uh, but the state has come out with some new guidance, and it felt like a good time then for the borough to update our form, because our form has not been updated for a number of years. Um, so this, uh, new form that was provided in your backup, um, reflects the guidance that has come out from the state, um, and doesn't necessarily change anything about our policy or the way we handle it, uh, I just wanted to make sure that council was aware of just the change to our form, um, to reflect the guidance from the state. And we have update, we're, with this, um, with how we're moving forward with this draft, we'll update the website as well to reflect all that information, um, as well as to make it a little bit easier on the website to get to both the form itself and the information about it. Um, so, any questions about that? Um, the last item is a request that came from Millersville University, a request for their block party on East Frederick Street, so a closure of the street on October 4th, that is the same day as the parade, it's homecoming day. Um, in the backup was the, uh, the letter that we received from the university with the information about it. It would be just the closure of that section on East Frederick Street, um, that's between Creek and, uh, and where the angle parking is there, um, for their annual block party. Um, so we just need council's approval for that.
I will make a motion to authorize the closing of East Frederick Street on October 4th, 2025, for the Millersville University Homecoming Block Party.
Second.
Do I have a second? There we go, to give it to Linda. Any discussion required on this one from council? Very well, seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions? Sounds as though the motion carries.
Perfect, that's all I got this evening.
Very good. Um, then at the. Then at this time, council will hear any comments, requests, or concerns from members of the public related to items on the agenda or other matters. You will have up to five minutes to speak. We do ask that you either come to the microphone or request that the microphone be brought to you. Also that you give your name and a general address for the record. Would anybody like to address council at this time? I'd be disappointed if you didn't.
James Nick France, 1155 North Duke Street. It seems more recently that, I live at the bottom of the hill on Duke Street, and any time it rains, the water really comes down there. I see cars have to go in the middle of the street, come down. If they don't, they hit it, they throw water eight foot high or more. There's going to be an accident. It's the speed limit's only 25, there shouldn't be, but you know how that goes. But the water comes down southward, and it gets down to the bottom. There's no drain there. There's a drain on the other side of the street, which handles that. That drain can go to the end of my yard. They could put another drain on my side to eliminate. There's water comes up North Duke Street. So you have two flows of water coming there, and sometimes it really gets full of water. My whole yard gets flooded, that's my problem. But it would be nice if they're considering any kind of street work, that they could put a drain right at the bottom of there. Actually, they could put two drains at my property and the other property, and eliminate that property. But I see an awful lot of chances that cars are on the side or plating because they come down there and they really hit it. And it seems like a dangerous thing. And I don't know if it's because of the construction they're doing back up there, and maybe it'll get worse because of the roads coming out on the street. I don't know. It should stay on the one side, it gets pretty heavy, but it gets that heavy on both sides.
And you said that's North Duke Street. Are we talking about the termination of the actual north part of Duke Street?
Yeah, when you come a whole way down to the bottom there.
At the three-way stop.
Yeah, and, yeah, well, there's this place that goes back to the church, but the other places, I, I own that, that area of land right now. And if it got real cold, we could ice skate across there because I get about a foot or two of water, it gets a whole way back there.
And that could all change when Winfield puts, finishes that road that comes out there.
Where's that? Oh, you mean out onto the.
Yeah.
Or make it better or worse?
Oh, I think it would get worse.
Yeah, I do too. And they're knocking all the trees, they already knocked all the trees down and all the things that are going to stop any kind of water coming down. And it's bad now. I mean, it really is. It, I mean, it just seems to progressively getting worse. So I just thought if we're going to do any street work, they should consider that. Okay, thank you. Sorry to extend your meeting.
Quite all right. We've got a few more items yet. Would anybody else like to address council?
All know who I am. Randall Snyder, 209 Manor Avenue. When you write your ordinance, please do not forget about 95% of the other people that care about their property. Because I watched the neighbor, I know what he did. He planted two milkweed seeds and he's going to call it a natural plant. And that's what he's going to do. Because he's been doing it. So that's all I'm asking, is that you care about the people that do care about their Instead of the five or six that don't.
Oh, that's, can I respond?
It's discouraged. We generally will hear comments and we'll use that as part of our decision-making in the future.
Yes.
No, we appreciate it, Mr. Snyder.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And thanks for all your work.
Thank you.
I kept saying with modification. Remember I was saying with modification?
People will push it to the limit, we know that.
Yeah, I know, it's a human nature.
Because they've already done it.
Would anybody else like to address council at this time?
I think it's.
Very good. In that case, at this time, we will enter to a motion to go into executive session to discuss our police association contract negotiations. Council will enter the executive session at 7:15 PM. If the public would like to remain until council exits executive session, we ask that you exit this room and remain in the lobby until we reconvene. The streaming of this meeting will continue to run. I don't believe we will have any voting items on our return, however, if you want to take that into consideration on whether or not you're waiting for us. But yeah, at this time, we will adjourn to executive session.
We didn't have the police, we didn't have our police report.
Well, you did a motion for that.
I'm ready. It's a name.
You don't have to stand.
Police report. We probably should.
Report.
Yes, it should have been there. Otherwise, the police chief sat there the whole time for nothing.
I'm going to leave this stuff here.
He always comes.
We have to come back anyway to a judge, so I guess.
Can they see your number? Just, if they can't see the number, then.
Mike Angelo.
Yeah. The number up there, this is.
Right.
Today we will be exploring the 25th century.[15.00][15.00]15th century, 16th century, and the late nineteenth century.[20.00][20.00]17th century, 18th century, and the late nineteenth century.[25.00][25.00]21st century, 22nd century, and the late nineteenth century.[30.00][30.00]23rd century, 24th century, and the late nineteenth century.[35.00][35.00]25th century, 26th century, and the late nineteenth century.[40.00][40.00]27th century, 28th century, and the late nineteenth century.[45.00][45.00]29th century, 30th century, and the late nineteenth century.[50.00][50.00]31st century, 32th century, and the late nineteenth century.[55.00][55.00]33rd century, 34th century, and the late nineteenth century.[60.00][60.00]35th century, 36th century, and the late nineteenth century.[65.00][65.00]37th century, 38th century, and the late nineteenth century.[70.00][70.00]39th century, 40th century, and the late nineteenth century.[75.00][75.00]41st century, 42th century, and the late nineteenth century.[79.00][79.00]43rd century, 44th century, and the late nineteenth century.[84.00][84.00]45th century, 46th century, and the late nineteenth century.[89.00][89.00]47th century, 48th century, and the late nineteenth century.[94.00][94.00]49th century, 50th century, and the late nineteenth century.[99.00][99.00]51st century, 52th century, and the late nineteenth century.[104.00][104.00]53rd century, 54th century, and the late nineteenth century.[109.00][109.00]55th century, 56th century, and the late nineteenth century.[114.00][114.00]57th century, 58th century, and the late nineteenth century.[119.00][119.00]59th century, 60th century, and the late nineteenth century.[124.00][124.00]61st century, 62th century, and the late nineteenth century.[129.00][129.00]63rd century, 64th century, and the late nineteenth century.[134.00][134.00]65th century, 66th century, and the late nineteenth century.[139.00][139.00]67th century, 68th century, and the late nineteenth century.[144.00][144.00]69th century, 70th century, and the late nineteenth century.[149.00][149.00]71st century, 72th century, and the late nineteenth century.[154.00][154.00]73rd century, 74th century, and the late nineteenth century.[159.00][159.00]75th century, 76th century, and the late nineteenth century.[164.00][164.00]77th century, 78th century, and the late nineteenth century.[169.00][169.00]79th century, 80th century, and the late nineteenth century.[174.00][174.00]81st century, 82th century, and the late nineteenth century.[179.00][179.00]83rd century, 84th century, and the late nineteenth century.[184.00][184.00]85th century, 86th century, and the late nineteenth century.[189.00][189.00]87th century, 88th century, and the late nineteenth century.[194.00][194.00]89th century, 90th century, and the late nineteenth century.[199.00][199.00]91st century, 92th century, and the late nineteenth century.[204.00][204.00]93rd century, 94th century, and the late nineteenth century.[209.00][209.00]95th century, 96th century, and the late nineteenth century.[214.00][214.00]97th century, 98th century, and the late nineteenth century.[219.00][219.00]99th century, 100th century, and the late nineteenth century.[224.00][224.00]101st century, 102th century, and the late nineteenth century.[229.00][229.00]103rd century, 104th century, and the late nineteenth century.[234.00][234.00]105th century, 106th century, and the late nineteenth century.[240.00][240.00]107th century, 108th century, and the late nineteenth century.[245.00][245.00]109th century, 110th century, and the late nineteenth century.[250.00][250.00]111th century, 112th century, and the late nineteenth century.[255.00][255.00]113th century, 114th century, and the late nineteenth century.[260.00][260.00]115th century, 116th century, and the late nineteenth century.[265.00][265.00]117th century, 118th century, and the late nineteenth century.[271.00][271.00]119th century, 120th century, and the late nineteenth century.[276.00][276.00]121st century, 122th century, and the late nineteenth century.[281.00][281.00]123rd century, 124th century, and the late nineteenth century.[286.00][286.00]125th century, 126th century, and the late nineteenth century.[291.00][291.00]127th century, 128th century, and the late nineteenth century.[296.00][296.00]129th century, 130th century, and the late nineteenth century.[301.00][301.00]131st century, 132th century, and the late nineteenth century.[306.00][306.00]133rd century, 134th century, and the late nineteenth century.[311.00][311.00]135th century, 136th century, and the late nineteenth century.[316.00][316.00]138th century, 139th century, and the late nineteenth century.[322.00][322.00]140th century, 141th century, and the late nineteenth century.[327.00][327.00]142nd century, 143rd century, and the late nineteenth century.[332.00][332.00]144th century, 145th century, and the late nineteenth century.[337.00][337.00]148th century, 149th century, and the late nineteenth century.[343.00][343.00]150th century, 151th century, and the late nineteenth century.[348.00][348.00]152nd century, 153rd century, and the late nineteenth century.[353.00][353.00]154th century, 155th century, and the late nineteenth century.[358.00][358.00]156th century, 157th century, and the late nineteenth century.[363.00][363.00]158th century, 159th century, and the late nineteenth century.[370.00][370.00]160th century, 161th century, and the late nineteenth century.[375.00][375.00]162nd century, 163rd century, and the late nineteenth century.[380.00][380.00]164th century, 165th century, and the late nineteenth century.[385.00][385.00]166th century, 167th century, and the late nineteenth century.[391.00][391.00]168th century, 169th century, and the late nineteenth century.[396.00][396.00]170th century, 171th century, and the late nineteenth century.[401.00][401.00]172nd century, 173rd century, and the late nineteenth century.[406.00][406.00]174th century, 175th century, and the late nineteenth century.[411.00][411.00]176th century, 177th century, and the late nineteenth century.[416.00][416.00]178th century, 179th century, and the late nineteenth century.[422.00][422.00]180th century, 181th century, and the late nineteenth century.[427.00][427.00]182nd century, 183rd century, and the late nineteenth century.[432.00][432.00]184th century, 185th century, and the late nineteenth century.[437.00][437.00]188th century, 189th century, and the late nineteenth century.[443.00][443.00]190th century, 191th century, and the late nineteenth century.[448.00][448.00]192nd century, 193rd century, and the late nineteenth century.[453.00][453.00]194th century, 195th century, and the late nineteenth century.[458.00][458.00]196th century, 197th century, and the late nineteenth century.[463.00][463.00]198th century, 199th century, and the late nineteenth century.[468.00][468.00]199th century, 200th century, and the late nineteenth century.[473.00][473.00]200th century, 201st century, and the late nineteenth century.[478.00][478.00]21st century, 22nd century, and the late nineteenth century.[483.00][483.00]22nd century, 23rd century, and the late nineteenth century.[488.00][488.00]23rd century, 24th century, and the late nineteenth century.[493.00][493.00]24th century, 25th century, and the late nineteenth century.[498.00][498.00]25th century, 26th century, and the late nineteenth century.[503.00][503.00]26th century, 27th century, and the late nineteenth century.[508.00][508.00]27th century, 28th century, and the late nineteenth century.[513.00][513.00]28th century, 29th century, and the late nineteenth century.[518.00][518.00]29th century, 30th century, and the late nineteenth century.[523.00][523.00]30th century, 31th century, and the late nineteenth century.[528.00][528.00]31st century, 32th century, and the late nineteenth century.[533.00][533.00]32th century, 33th century, and the late nineteenth century.[538.00][538.00]33rd century, 34th century, and the late nineteenth century.[543.00][543.00]34th century, 35th century, and the late nineteenth century.[548.00][548.00]35th century, 36th century, and the late nineteenth century.[553.00][553.00]36th century, 37th century, and the late nineteenth century.[558.00][558.00]37th century, 38th century, and the late nineteenth century.[563.00][563.00]38th century, 39th century, and the late nineteenth century.[568.00][568.00]39th century, 40th century, and the late nineteenth century.[573.00][573.00]40th century, 41th century, and the late nineteenth century.[578.00][578.00]41st century, 42th century, and the late nineteenth century.[583.00][583.00]42nd century, 43rd century, and the late nineteenth century.[588.00][588.00]43rd century, 44th century, and the late nineteenth century.[593.00][593.00]44th century, 45th century, and the late nineteenth century.[598.00][598.00]45th century, 46th century, and the late nineteenth century.[603.00][603.00]46th century, 47th century, and the late nineteenth century.[608.00][608.00]48th century, 49th century, and the late nineteenth century.[613.00][613.00]49th century, 50th century, and the late nineteenth century.[618.00][618.00]50th century, 51th century, and the late nineteenth century.[623.00][623.00]51st century, 52th century, and the late nineteenth century.[628.00][628.00]52th century, 53th century, and the late nineteenth century.[633.00][633.00]53th century, 54th century, and the late nineteenth century.[638.00][638.00]54th century, 55th century, and the late nineteenth century.[643.00][643.00]55th century, 56th century, and the late nineteenth century.[648.00][648.00]57th century, 58th century, and the late nineteenth century.[653.00][653.00]58th century, 59th century, and the late nineteen century.[658.00][658.00]59th century, 60th century, and the late nineteen century.[663.00][663.00]60th century, 61th century, and the late nineteen century.[668.00][668.00]62nd century, 63rd century, and the late nineteen century.[673.00][673.00]64th century, 65th century, and the late nineteen century.[678.00][678.00]66th century, 67th century, and the late nineteen century.[683.00][683.00]68th century, 69th century, and the late nineteen century.[688.00][688.00]69th century, 70th century, and the late nineteen century.[693.00][693.00]71st century, 72th century, and the late nineteen century.[698.00][698.00]72th century, 73th century, and the late nineteen century.[703.00][703.00]74th century, 75th century, and the late nineteen century.[708.00][708.00]76th century, 77th century, and the late nineteen century.[713.00][713.00]78th century, 79th century, and the late nineteen century.[718.00][718.00]79th century, 80th century, and the late nineteen century.[723.00][723.00]81st century, 82th century, and the late nineteen century.[728.00][728.00]83rd century, 84th century, and the late nineteen century.[733.00][733.00]85th century, 86th century, and the late nineteen century.[738.00][738.00]87th century, 88th century, and the late nineteen century.[743.00][743.00]89th century, 90th century, and the late nineteen century.[748.00][748.00]91st century, 92th century, and the late nineteen century.[753.00][753.00]93rd century, 94th century, and the late nineteen century.[758.00][758.00]95th century, 96th century, and the late nineteen century.[763.00][763.00]97th century, 98th century, and the late nineteen century.[768.00][768.00]99th century, 100th century, and the late nineteen century.[773.00][773.00]101st century, 102th century, and the late nineteen century.[778.00][778.00]103rd century, 104th century, and the late nineteen century.[783.00][783.00]105th century, 106th century, and the late nineteen century.[788.00][788.00]107th century, 108th century, and the late nineteen century.[793.00][793.00]109th century, 110th century, and the late nineteen century.[798.00][798.00]111st century, 112th century, and the late nineteen century.[803.00][803.00]113th century, 114th century, and the late nineteen century.[808.00][808.00]115th century, 116th century, and the late nineteen century.[813.00][813.00]117th century, 118th century, and the late nineteen century.[820.00][820.00]119th century, 120th century, and the late nineteen century.[825.00][825.00]121st century, 122th century, and the late nineteen century.[830.00][830.00]123rd century, 124th century, and the late nineteen century.[835.00][835.00]125th century, 126th century, and the late nineteen century.[840.00][840.00]127th century, 128th century, and the late nineteen century.[845.00][845.00]129th century, 130th century, and the late nineteen century.[850.00][850.00]131st century, 132th century, and the late nineteen century.[855.00][855.00]133rd century, 134th century, and the late nineteen century.[860.00][860.00]135th century, 136th century, and the late nineteen century.[865.00][865.00]137th century, 138th century, and the late nineteen century.[871.00][871.00]139th century, 140th century, and the late nineteen century.[876.00][876.00]141st century, 142th century, and the late nineteen century.[881.00][881.00]143rd century, 144th century, and the late nineteen century.[886.00][886.00]145th century, 146th century, and the late nineteen century.[891.00][891.00]147th century, 148th century, and the late nineteen century.[896.00][896.00]149th century, 150th century, and the late nineteen century.[901.00][901.00]151st century, 152th century, and the late nineteen century.[906.00][906.00]153rd century, 154th century, and the late nineteen century.[911.00][911.00]155th century, 156th century, and the late nineteen century.[916.00][916.00]157th century, 158th century, and the late nineteen century.[921.00][921.00]159th century, 160th century, and the late nineteen century.[926.00][926.00]161st century, 162th century, and the late nineteen century.[931.00][931.00]163rd century, 164th century, and the late nineteen century.[936.00][936.00]165th century, 166th century, and the late nineteen century.[941.00][941.00]167th century, 168th century, and the late nineteen century.[946.00][946.00]169th century, 170th century, and the late nineteen century.[951.00][951.00]171st century, 172th century, and the late nineteen century.[956.00][956.00]173rd century, 174th century, and the late nineteen century.[961.00][961.00]175th century, 176th century, and the late nineteen century.[966.00][966.00]177th century, 178th century, and the late nineteen century.[971.00][971.00]179th century, 180th century, and the late nineteen century.[976.00][976.00]181st century, 182th century, and the late nineteen century.[981.00][981.00]183rd century, 184th century, and the late nineteen century.[986.00][986.00]185th century, 186th century, and the late nineteen century.[991.00][991.00]187th century, 188th century, and the late nineteen century.[996.00][996.00]189th century, 190th century, and the late nineteen century.[1001.00][1001.00]191st century, 192th century, and the late nineteen century.[1006.00][1006.00]193rd century, 194th century, and the late nineteen century.[1011.00][1011.00]195th century, 196th century, and the late nineteen century.[1016.00][1016.00]197th century, 198th century, and the late nineteen century.[1021.00][1021.00]199th century, 200th century, and the late nineteen century.[1026.00][1026.00]201st century, 202nd century, and the late nineteen century.[1031.00][1031.00]203rd century, 204th century, and the late nineteen century.[1036.00][1036.00]205th century, 206th century, and the late nineteen century.[1041.00][1041.00]207th century, 208th century, and the late nineteen century.[1046.00][1046.00]209th century, 210th century, and the late nineteen century.[1051.00][1051.00]211st century, 212th century, and the late nineteen century.[1056.00][1056.00]213rd century, 214th century, and the late nineteen century.[1061.00][1061.00]215th century, 216th century, and the late nineteen century.[1066.00][1066.00]217th century, 218th century, and the late nineteen century.[1071.00][1071.00]219th century, 220th century, and the late nineteen century.[1076.00][1076.00]221st century, 222th century, and the late nineteen century.[1079.00][1079.00]223rd century, 224th century, and the late nineteen century.[1084.00][1084.00]225th century, 226th century, and the late nineteen century.[1090.00][1090.00]227th century, 228th century, and the late nineteen century.[1095.00][1095.00]229th century, 230th century, and the late nineteen century.[1100.00][1100.00]231st century, 232th century, and the late nineteen century.[1105.00][1105.00]233rd century, 234th century, and the late nineteen century.[1110.00][1110.00]235th century, 236th century, and the late nineteen century.[1115.00][1115.00]237th century, 238th century, and the late nineteen century.[1120.00][1120.00]239th century, 240th century, and the late nineteen century.[1125.00][1125.00]241st century, 242th century, and the late nineteen century.[1129.00][1129.00]243rd century, 244th century, and the late nineteen century.[1134.00][1134.00]245th century, 246th century, and the late nineteen century.[1140.00][1140.00]247th century, 248th century, and the late nineteen century.[1145.00][1145.00]249th century, 250th century, and the late nineteen century.[1150.00][1150.00]251st century, 252th century, and the late nineteen century.[1155.00][1155.00]253rd century, 254th century, and the late nineteen century.[1160.00][1160.00]255th century, 256th century, and the late nineteen century.[1165.00][1165.00]257th century, 258th century, and the late nineteen century.[1171.00][1171.00]259th century, 260th century, and the late nineteen century.[1176.00][1176.00]261st century, 262th century, and the late nineteen century.[1179.00][1179.00]263rd century, 264th century, and the late nineteen century.[1184.00][1184.00]265th century, 266th century, and the late nineteen century.[1190.00][1190.00]267th century, 268th century, and the late nineteen century.[1195.00][1195.00]269th century, 270th century, and the late nineteen century.[1200.00][1200.00]271st century, 272th century, and the late nineteen century.[1205.00][1205.00]273rd century, 274th century, and the late nineteen century.[1210.00][1210.00]275th century, 276th century, and the late nineteen century.[1215.00][1215.00]277th century, 278th century, and the late nineteen century.[1220.00][1220.00]279th century, 280th century, and the late nineteen century.[1225.00][1225.00]281st century, 282th century, and the late nineteen century.[1229.00][1229.00]283rd century, 284th century, and the late nineteen century.[1234.00][1234.00]285th century, 286th century, and the late nineteen century.[1240.00][1240.00]287th century, 288th century, and the late nineteen century.[1245.00][1245.00]289th century, 290th century, and the late nineteen century.[1249.00][1249.00]291st century, 292th century, and the late nineteen century.[1249.00][1249.00]293rd century, 294th century, and the late nineteen century.[1254.00][1254.00]295th century, 296th century, and the late nineteen century.[1260.00][1260.00]297th century, 298th century, and the late nineteen century.[1265.00][1265.00]299th century, 300th century, and the late nineteen century.[1270.00][1270.00]301st century, 302th century, and the late nineteen century.[1275.00][1275.00]303rd century, 304th century, and the late nineteen century.[1280.00][1280.00]305th century, 306th century, and the late nineteen century.[1285.00][1285.00]307th century, 308th century, and the late nineteen century.[1290.00][1290.00]309th century, 310th century, and the late nineteen century.[1295.00][1295.00]311st century, 312th century, and the late nineteen century.[1300.00][1300.00]313rd century, 314th century, and the late nineteen century.[1305.00][1305.00]315th century, 316th century, and the late nineteen century.[1310.00][1310.00]317th century, 318th century, and the late nineteen century.[1315.00][1315.00]319th century, 320th century, and the late nineteen century.[1320.00][1320.00]321st century, 322th century, and the late nineteen century.[1325.00][1325.00]323rd century, 324th century, and the late nineteen century.[1330.00][1330.00]325th century, 326th century, and the late nineteen century.[1335.00][1335.00]327th century, 328th century, and the late nineteen century.[1340.00][1340.00]329th century, 330th century, and the late nineteen century.[1345.00][1345.00]331st century, 332th century, and the late nineteen century.[1349.00][1349.00]333rd century, 334th century, and the late nineteen century.[1354.00][1354.00]335th century, 336th century, and the late nineteen century.[1360.00][1360.00]337th century, 338th century, and the late nineteen century.[1365.00][1365.00]339th century, 340th century, and the late nineteen century.[1370.00][1370.00]341st century, 342th century, and the late nineteen century.[1375.00][1375.00]343rd century, 344th century, and the late nineteen century.[1380.00][1380.00]345th century, 346th century, and the late nineteen century.[1385.00][1385.00]347th century, 348th century, and the late nineteen century.[1390.00][1390.00]349th century, 350th century, and the late nineteen century.[1395.00][1395.00]351st century, 352th century, and the late nineteen century.[1400.00][1400.00]353rd century, 354th century, and the late nineteen century.[1405.00][1405.00]355th century, 356th century, and the late nineteen century.[1410.00][1410.00]357th century, 358th century, and the late nineteen century.[1415.00][1415.00]359th century, 360th century, and the late nineteen century.[1420.00][1420.00]361st century, 362th century, and the late nineteen century.[1425.00][1425.00]363rd century, 364th century, and the late nineteen century.[1430.00][1430.00]365th century, 366th century, and the late nineteen century.[1435.00][1435.00]367th century, 368th century, and the late nineteen century.[1440.00][1440.00]369th century, 370th century, and the late nineteen century.[1445.00][1445.00]371st century, 372th century, and the late nineteen century.[1449.00][1449.00]373rd century, 374th century, and the late nineteen century.[1454.00][1454.00]375th century, 376th century, and the late nineteen century.[1460.00][1460.00]377th century, 378th century, and the late nineteen century.[1465.00][1465.00]379th century, 380th century, and the late nineteen century.[1470.00][1470.00]381st century, 382th century, and the late nineteen century.[1475.00][1475.00]383rd century, 384th century, and the late nineteen century.[1480.00][1480.00]385th century, 386th century, and the late nineteen century.[1485.00][1485.00]387th century, 388th century, and the late nineteen century.[1490.00][1490.00]389th century, 390th century, and the late nineteen century.[1495.00][1495.00]391st century, 392th century, and the late nineteen century.[1500.00][1500.00]393rd century, 394th century, and the late nineteen century.[1505.00][1505.00]395th century, 396th century, and the late nineteen century.[1510.00][1510.00]397th century, 398th century, and the late nineteen century.[1515.00][1515.00]399th century, 400th century, and the late nineteen century.[1520.00][1520.00]401st century, 402th century, and the late nineteen century.[1525.00][1525.00]403rd century, 404th century, and the late nineteen century.[1530.00][1530.00]405th century, 406th century, and the late nineteen century.[1535.00][1535.00]407th century, 408th century, and the late nineteen century.[1540.00][1540.00]409th century, 410th century, and the late nineteen century.[1545.00][1545.00]411st century, 412th century, and the late nineteen century.[1549.00][1549.00]413rd century, 414th century, and the late nineteen century.[1554.00][1554.00]415th century, 416th century, and the late nineteen century.[1560.00][1560.00]417th century, 418th century, and the late nineteen century.[1565.00][1565.00]419th century, 420th century, and the late nineteen century.[1570.00][1570.00]421st century, 422th century, and the late nineteen century.[1575.00][1575.00]423rd century, 424th century, and the late nineteen century.[1580.00][1580.00]425th century, 426th century, and the late nineteen century.[1585.00][1585.00]427th century, 428th century, and the late nineteen century.[1590.00][1590.00]429th century, 430th century, and the late nineteen century.[1595.00][1595.00]431st century, 432th century, and the late nineteen century.[1600.00][1600.00]433rd century, 434th century, and the late nineteen century.[1605.00][1605.00]435th century, 436th century, and the late nineteen century.[1610.00][1610.00]437th century, 438th century, and the late nineteen century.[1615.00][1615.00]439th century, 440th century, and the late nineteen century.[1619.00][1619.00]441st century, 442th century, and the late nineteen century.[1619.00][1619.00]443rd century, 444th century, and the late nineteen century.[1624.00][1624.00]445th century, 446th century, and the late nineteen century.[1630.00][1630.00]447th century, 448th century, and the late nineteen century.[1635.00][1635.00]449th century, 450th century, and the late nineteen century.[1640.00][1640.00]451st century, 452th century, and the late nineteen century.[1645.00][1645.00]453rd century, 454th century, and the late nineteen century.[1650.00][1650.00]455th century, 456th century, and the late nineteen century.[1655.00][1655.00]457th century, 458th century, and the late nineteen century.[1660.00][1660.00]459th century, 460th century, and the late nineteen century.[1665.00][1665.00]461st century, 462th century, and the late nineteen century.[1669.00][1669.00]463rd century, 464th century, and the late nineteen century.[1674.00][1674.00]465th century, 466th century, and the late nineteen century.[1680.00][1680.00]467th century, 468th century, and the late nineteen century.[1685.00][1685.00]469th century, 470th century, and the late nineteen century.[1689.00][1689.00]471st century, 472th century, and the late nineteen century.[1689.00][1689.00]473rd century, 474th century, and the late nineteen century.[1694.00][1694.00]475th century, 476th century, and the late nineteen century.[1700.00][1700.00]477th century, 478th century, and the late nineteen century.[1705.00][1705.00]479th century, 480th century, and the late nineteen century.[1710.00][1710.00]481st century, 482th century, and the late nineteen century.[1715.00][1715.00]483rd century, 484th century, and the late nineteen century.[1720.00][1720.00]485th century, 486th century, and the late nineteen century.[1725.00][1725.00]487th century, 488th century, and the late nineteen century.[1730.00][1730.00]489th century, 490th century, and the late nineteen century.[1735.00][1735.00]491st century, 492th century, and the late nineteen century.[1739.00][1739.00]493rd century, 494th century, and the late nineteen century.[1744.00][1744.00]495th century, 496th century, and the late nineteen century.